That is a good way to put it down. My old boss.
Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd. We normally meet on a Monday, but as yesterday was a holiday. So welcome. It's a regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy is absent. Vice Mayor Hill?
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Escalotti?
Present.
Mayor Kate?
Present. Thank you. We met in a closed session that was prior to this meeting. I'll invite the city attorney to report out.
Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. So welcome if you're here in the chambers or listening in. As always, we start by appreciating all of our staff that are working hard out there every day, especially right now. I guess there's a little bit of a power outage on Fourth Street. Remember to stop at stop signs, our blinking lights if the power isn't on. So thank you for what you do every single day for our city. I'm going to open my remarks by sharing that last night, former San Rafael mayor Alborro passed away. We will adjourn tonight's meeting in his honor. And at that time, the city attorney and myself will say a few words about this amazing individual who gave so much to San Rafael. That will be at the end of the meeting. A few more comments. School has started. And once again, students are delving into their school books. So it's appropriate that September is also the month that has banned book week. This week was started in 1982 in response to a sudden surge in the number of challenges to books in libraries, bookstores and schools. So for context, 2021 to 2023, over 6,500 books have been targeted for censorship. This annual event highlights the value of free and open access to information and brings together the entire book community. I'm happy to say that here in San Rafael, there will be events celebrating the banned books. They are going to be at Blue Moon Comics, September 25th from 5:00 to 7:00. Rebound Bookstore, September 26th from 6:00 to 7:30. Saturday, the 28th, Friends Bookstore, which is on C Street from 11:00 to 2:00 and Copper Fields from 2:00 to 3:00. We'll make sure that it's also sent out through the snapshot. As I know I read that quickly. We include as part of the opening remarks, a land acknowledgement. This is in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on issues that matter to them and to our community. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. We honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you for being here. I will turn to the city clerk who can describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. Members of the public wish to provide public comment displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centerfell you live in, or if you're from outside of Centerfell. We do offer closed captioning for this meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. And if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofcenterfell.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll start with the city manager and council member reports. City manager, Lillibich.
Good evening, mayor, council and community members. I also wanted to acknowledge the terribly sad news to hear the passing of former mayor Alborro. Today, Mayor Kate ordered the flag in front of City Hall and all the fire stations to be raised in half-mast in his honor. So a few, a few events and announcements. Just as a reminder, we have the second Friday Art Walk on next Friday on the 13th. And a special event as part of that youth and arts is doing a special United Against Hate Week poster making event, which will be at their location at 917 C Street during the same hours from 5:00 to 8:00. So I thought it'd be good to give parents who are getting kids back to school a heads up that that should be a really fun event. Also a reminder that Porch Fest in the West End in the Gristle Park neighborhood is Sunday, September 15th from 12:00 to 5:00. And then the next Free Movie in the Park is Friday, September 20th. That'll be at Sun Valley Park, 5:30, and it will be Toy Story, starting at 7:15. There's a great free event, the Marin County Electrification Career Fair is Saturday, September 14th. That's from 10:00 to 3:00 at the Marin County Exhibit Hall, 10 Avenue of the Flags. There'll be opportunities for networking with potential employers, live workshops and insights into potential education opportunities and/or career trajectories. Next, I want to talk a little bit about illegal food vendors. It's a, it's a topic we've heard a lot about from the community recently. And I just wanted to inform everyone what the plan is, what's been done so far. So code enforcement staff from the city, as well as our police department, are working in coordination with the County of Marin's Environmental Health Department to urgently address the unpermitted food vendors. The complexity of the regulations is such that the city really, there is a code enforcement action that we can take. And then we can look at business licenses, make sure those are all proper. But the county environmental health team is the one that really is the regulator of the food vending and has the more significant enforcement tools in this regard. So what's happened recently is there have been inspections conducted as from locations that we've found, as well as in response to community complaints about those locations. An after-hours special operation to follow up with those three agencies. Code enforcement, the police department and county environmental health is scheduled for later this week. If people are not in compliance, who have had pre-citations and warnings, then vendors will be cited and it will be up to the county's team to determine if their food will be confiscated or if anything other enforcement action related to environmental health will occur. In the meantime, we've created a webpage where you can find out more information. You can also submit a complaint if you see a vendor and you want to give us a real-time update that you've noticed someone there or in a new spot. You can go to cityofsanraffel.org/food-vending and you can fill out a brief form that just says the location. You don't even have to put your name. Additionally, we're also working collaboratively with multiple agencies to provide education, opportunities and technical assistance to food vendors who want to come into compliance and need some additional support for that. The police department is offering two speed, safety and community LiDAR radar classes. These are scheduled for Wednesday, September 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and Sunday, September 22nd from 10:00 to noon. These are, these are an opportunity for the community to get hands-on experience with speed detection and technology and engaging with police officers to gain insights on daily operations and keeping our roads safer. So it's a really cool event. I think the first time we've ever done anything like this. If you want to register, you can go to eventbrite.com/under-sanraffelpd resident LiDAR/radar and traffic safety class. Just one more announcement. The downtown library, the Carnegie Building right here, the main downtown library, is now closed for much-needed safety and infrastructure remodeling. On September 16th, 16th, we will be opening a pop-up library at 1009 Fourth Street, which is the building directly across from Bank America. It's the former Beauty Expo space. And that pop-up temporary location will be up and running until the main library is reopened.
Thank you for your report. I will turn to my colleagues for any meetings that they've attended they would like to report out on. Vice Mayor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have one meeting to report. I was away for a bit, so this goes back to the end of July, Monday, July 22nd. I attended the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting. We heard several topics, including a group discussion in a report from the Marin Small Business Development Center, from the director, Miriam Correll. It was a great report on what they do. I thought the numbers were surprising. Folks are interested, this is, there is a full packet to see what the readout was, as well as a report on equitable low-carbon economy and how that can show up in our community. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you, mayor. I attended, we still held the Bafa Steering Committee meeting with the county. Bafa's actually been pulled from the ballot for the nine Bay Area counties. But our county group has decided to continue meeting so that we can use that opportunity to continue talking about county-wide strategy around housing. We're not quite sure yet the direction of that, but we all decided it was a good opportunity to have the people around the table to continue those conversations. Attended the Northgate Town Square Community Meeting. We were very, it was nice to see over 100 people attend that. And so that was good to see their new plans. Mayor Kate and I attended the Safeway Terralinda ribbon cutting. And if you haven't noticed, if you have, if you happen to be in there, the aisles are actually named for streets in the area. So it's sort of fun. And city manager and I were at the short school for their ribbon cutting of the early learning center. And this is a really fantastic thing. We closed short school about five years ago from the school board, San Rafael School Board because of lower enrollment. And now it's been reopened as a early learning center for TK, as well as early intervention. And the whole site's been redone and it looks amazing. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Escalotti?
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. So I attended the quarterly CCAP meeting, which is the City Climate Action Plan this last month, I guess. And we had updates from Zero Waste Marine, Sustainable San Rafael. Our own Kate Hegeman gave us an update on the sea level rise. And Cory Bitov also on the annual greenhouse gas inventory report that is going to come to the council. So it was one of my favorite meetings of the year. And I look forward to the next quarter. We always run out of time. Also, related to climate action, we had, I attended a meeting with Mayor Kate for Baywave. And we actually had an update from an adaptation effort in Corta Madera, which was very interesting. And they had a really nice movie explaining all that. And also, there's going to be a new countywide SLR Sea Level Rise Governance Committee. And there's going to be, so they were talking about the structure and how that's going to work. Also attended the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce had a green business midday meetup, adventure pad. And they were celebrating the big and the small businesses of the, of green businesses of the year. For, so big business is guide dogs for the blind. And the small green business is city carpets. And they were providing some of the green strategies they use for other businesses that they can implement. And we had another Sea Level Rise Subcommittee today with Mayor Kate as well. So it's definitely on the theme of something that is very important for the city. And then I'm going to finish by updating you on the movie in the park. And it was amazing to see so many community members. They had Kung Fu Panda, number four, unlimited. But what was really cool is that the library and recreation department had kids and parents from our Kung Fu classes. And they did a demonstration. So it's open to anybody. If you haven't seen our new brochure on recreation, it has like really great classes. All the departments were there, Public Works, Sea Level Rise. We had a police, fire, you know, all our partners, multicultural, Canal Alliance, Bosque de Canal, Boys Scouts. So it was really, really fun and it was very well attended. So thank you so much for putting it together to the library and recreation department. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two things to report out on. As you know, I'm your representative on SMART, Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit. Our August ridership hit a new record, nearly 92,000 riders. So we now have had five straight months of over 80,000 riders, which is amazing from a rail that started right before the pandemic. So really making up ground there. There is a youth and seniors as in older adults, free fare program. It was started in April and it's looking like this is making a big difference. Youth ridership is up 99% and seniors up 144%. So that is obviously positively impacting our ridership numbers. We have, there's been a request for bigger bike lockers. Some people have cargo bikes or electric bikes. We've installed new bike lockers at each of the stations that are bigger. You can rent them through the Bike Link app or through your Clipper card. And then finally, September is Transit and Rail Safety Month. And the saying is, see tracks, think train. And as we know, school is just back in session. And sometimes students might be new to the area, might not be walking, might be freshmen, not used to walking over tracks. So we are, when we meet with the school next week, we have invited the SMART personnel to give us any sort of materials that we can share with the schools. And they do, they do update the students on a regular basis. So we'll make sure that's taken care of. And then I want to follow up on something that council member Yaren Escalotti mentioned. So yes, we're at Baywave. There is a county-wide governance structure. And they've asked for representatives from each of the towns in the jurisdiction to participate. And council member Yaren Escalotti will be our representative on that steering committee. That steering committee will take the place of the Baywave meeting over the next 18 months as we figure out, we, the broad, we, the county, we, figure out the best way to address the process and systems around sea level rides projects. So as always, thank you to my colleagues and to this city manager for all the work that you do between the meetings. And I will open up the floor. If there's any public comment on the city manager and council member reports, now is your opportunity. And what you just heard.
Good evening. Real quick, I got received a letter, a postcard today saying that there was a question about whether or not the Porch Fest would be held due to possible noise complaints from the community. So this is the first time I've seen that. I don't have a noise complaint, but I was just a little surprised to receive it so close to the, I mean, it's next weekend. So I just wanted to bring that up as an addenda.
Thank you for that input. Anyone else? Not seeing any, I'll close the public input and, oh, oh, go ahead. Sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Welcome.
Someone else was going first.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Collin, members of the San Rafael City Council. My name is Mario Ernesto Lopez. I live in the east side of the city. Just wanted to speak today about the passing of Mayor Borro. I first met Mayor Borro when I was in third grade at Coleman Elementary. I walked here to City Hall to interview the mayor and brought him back as my school project, interviewing the mayor. And over the years, I got to know Mayor Borro and his wife at my parish, at St. Rayfield's, and everything he did for our city. While I know the community center is named after Mayor Borro, I do hope and ask that the city council can consider doing something else or one more last thing for Mayor Borro and everything he meant for this city. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for those lovely comments. Thank you. Not seeing any else, I will close the public comment. Porch Fest is on, so I'm not sure what that postcard was, but it will be happening. So the next item is our consent agenda. Are there any items to be held from the consent agenda? Not seeing any, I will open the public comment. And it's quite a deep consent agenda. We have 4A through 4L. So if you'd like to comment on any of those individual items, now is your opportunity. Not seeing anyone, I will close the public comment. Request a motion on this item, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Escalotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. I'm delighted that we have two special presentations. We will be doing them from the dais. And as is our custom, we have public comment prior to the presentation. So I will open the public comment and the proclamations are supporting Hispanic Heritage Month and supporting Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. If you'd like to comment on either of these items, now is your opportunity. And actually, after I see you, after we give the proclamation, you'll have an opportunity to say something? Is that okay? Okay. No, no. Okay. Not seeing any public comment. We will go ahead and I've asked council member Yaren Escalotti to read the Hispanic Heritage Month. And after she has read it, then we would welcome both Cecilia Zamora and Catalina Lozano to say any words. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, mayor. So it is my pleasure to read the City of San Rafael Proclamation in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas the City of San Rafael proudly celebrates the vibrant contributions, rich cultures and deep histories of Hispanic and Latino individuals, families and communities across America, whose roots trace back to Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador and Mexico, and further to Spain, Africa, the Caribbean, Central America and South America. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrated from September 15th to October 15th, the anniversary of independence for many Latin American countries is celebrated with Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras and Nicaragua on September 15th, Mexico and Chile's Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th, and Dia de la Raza on October 12th. And I'm making it shorter. Whereas more than 30% of the population of San Rafael is of Hispanic, Latino and indigenous descent. And the city is proud to recognize its Hispanic and Latino leaders in the community and many partners that serve and support our local residents, individuals within our own city workforce, and all of the contributions from Hispanic and Latino residents, citizens and communities to the economic, cultural, social and historic fabric citizens, and communities to the economic, cultural, social, and historic fabric of our city. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of San Rafael hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-fourth as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of San Rafael and acknowledges the strength and resilience of our Hispanic and Latino communities and encourages resident to increase their own cultural awareness, embrace the valuable contributions of Hispanic and Latino individuals and communities, and observe and recognize their past and continued accomplishments.
Thank you. Now, by yep, Cecilia Zamora, come on up. And Catalina Lozano, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Well, we can call you Mayor Kate here. Thank you, Mayor Collin and city council members. Uh, my name is Cecilia Zamora and I'm president of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Marin and executive director of the Latino Council. First, I wanted to say how sad I am about the passing of Al Borro. He was a good friend and I'm old enough to have worked directly with him for many years and he used to call me kid. I remember that. Uh, how you doing, kid? Uh, so I just miss him greatly. Um, I wanted to introduce my my friend here, colleague, who's Catalina Lozano. She's from Alma, the Association of Latino Marin Attorneys. She also serves on the Hispanic Chamber Board and will be receiving this year's Spirit of Marin Award from the Hispanic Chamber for Alma at the upcoming event in uh later this month. Um, I wanted to, first of all, thank you so much for this National Hispanic Heritage Month resolution. It's so important for us to recognize and acknowledge a very strong multicultural connection uh to our whole community. And certainly this is one way to do it. Um, I wanted to also let you know that Catalina is a resident of Terra Linda, so she's here in San Rafael. Um, now I'm a resident of San in Samo, but my offices have been located in San Rafael all these years, many decades. And I served on the San Rafael Vision twenty forty uh work, which was so special. So I'm very proud to be a a big fan of the City of San Rafael. Um, I wanted to thank the city in particular for its proactive role in creating a strong multicultural community, particularly its support of the canal neighborhood in East San Rafael, which we know has a lot of of our um of underserved populations that really need our our support. And for also your vision to support a strong and growing Latino business sector. So we know that's really growing here in uh San Rafael and across the county. So I just wanted to thank you for having recognized that in your economic development work. And I'll be working with Micah and Stacy and those people to 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 work on that. So besides uh thanking you for National Hispanic Heritage Month, I just wanted to let you know that the Hispanic Chamber is also forming a canal Latino administrators superintendent and educators organization called Classe. And we'll be having a kickoff event in October. And many of those educators are from the City of San Rafael City Schools. So I'm very happy to uh to be getting their support. And then, of course, we invite you to our Christmas La Posada in December. And I think that's all I have to say. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. But I'll be receiving something? I think.
We'll be getting you, we'll be getting you.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. That'll be for our record, so we'll, we'll make sure we get it to you.
Catalina, did you want to say anything? Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I owe it all to my dear friend Cecilia Zamora, who, as you all know, is quite the horse here in San Rafael and the entire county of Marin. I am also an educator and um, one of my former students is here, Mario. Just by coincidence, I teach at UC Law in San Francisco. It used to be called UC Hastings. Um, and so we are very interested in having all the educators uh come together to ensure that all of the students in San Rafael and indeed in the county receive the top-notch education that Mario got here in San Rafael. So thank you so much for acknowledging our our heritage and our presence. And I hope I see a lot more of you all.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming. Thank you. We have an additional proclamation and it's supporting Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I'll read a portion of it and then I'll invite Kara Connors and Sophia Ballistieri to say a few words if you would like. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Month is recognized in September and throughout the month, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and community members unite to promote and raise awareness around suicide prevention, support, and resources available. Whereas in Marin County, one hundred and eighty-two friends, neighbors, and family members died by suicide between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, with an additional nine hundred and sixty-two self-harm injuries requiring visits to the emergency room during those years. And whereas the city reminds all residents and community members that the National Alliance on Mental Illness and the nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, dial nine eight eight, works to help individuals in crisis and provides resources for loved ones who want to support individuals, and that everyone can help prevent suicide by learning the warning signs, promoting prevention, and resilience, and committing to social change. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of San Rafael hereby proclaim the month September twenty twenty-four as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And there was more on here, but I really wanted to hear from Kara and Sophia. Welcome, and we look forward to your comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the city council um to acknowledge that September is the National Suicide Prevention Month and to highlight our efforts here in Marin County. All month, the Marin County Suicide Prevention Collaborative and its partners will unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. My name is Sophia Ballistieri and I am joined here by Kara Connors, who is a senior program coordinator for the Marin County Suicide Prevention Collaborative of Marin. And I'm going to read to you some um uh some things that I wrote this afternoon in thinking about this proclamation. So thank you very much. I'm the program coordinator for the lost team in the postvention support program here in Marin County. I'm also a survivor of suicide loss. In two thousand nine, I lost my son Christopher to suicide. He was nineteen years old. Nothing before and nothing since has impacted my life as profoundly, and I imagine nothing ever will. But my story is not unique. Many survivors of suicide loss have become advocates for suicide prevention. In fact, I work with a team of survivors who are now lost volunteers. Our team works in coordination with Marin County uh Coroner's Office Division. And we work the coroner's team to reach survivors almost immediately after a suicide loss. We bring resources, support, and instill hope. We also provide support groups for survivors of suicide loss, for survivors of suicide attempts. And we're helping to build uh a community and reduce the isolation of suicide. Our ability to survive a suicide loss or a suicide attempt or live with the thoughts of suicide and mental health challenges speak to our capacity to recover and our resiliency. In September, the Suicide Prevention Collaborative will focus on suicide prevention and recovery by hosting a series of events to share, to learn, and to grow. All community members are welcome to attend. Anyone can take steps to prevent suicide. It can begin with three simple steps. Asking if someone is thinking about suicide, listening to their story, and connecting them to resources. If you're concerned about yourself or someone you love, contact nine eight eight. No one has to go this alone. There is help. One very powerful step is to join us at the Marin County Suicide Prevention Collaborative. We know that connection is a primary protective factor in suicide prevention. We can all do our part by staying connected, staying informed, and promoting recovery all year long. Thank you so much.
Uh, again, thank you for having us um and for creating a space where we can normalize having these conversations. And I think it's really critical in our work to look to our lost survivors because we can help elevate their voices. We can learn from lost survivors and it can really help impact our programming, our intervention, um and our postvention um efforts. This takes each and every one of us. Um, and I'm really grateful to Sophia uh for coordinating the lost team, which stands for Local Outreach to Survivors of Suicide. And it models, it's a national program, so we're lucky enough um to have the resources to to make that a reality here um in our county. So thank you, Sophia, uh and to all of you for helping to create a space um for awareness around this really important um health issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you leave, if people want to find out more information, could you just repeat where that is? Or they want to participate in events or just?
Yes, so um I have a flyer here. I'll pass it around. Um, we have a QR code that people can um access. But if you go to MarinBHRS dot prevention dot org, then you can click on the Suicide Prevention um button and you'll see all of our information, resources. And there's also some information out um in the lobby.
Thank you. We'll be sure to have it in our snapshot too to send it out. Thank you, Sophia, for your words. Thank you, Kara, for being here. Thank you. We are moving on out of the presentations and into our other agenda items. And we'll start with the smoking ordinance amendment. Yep, and I see Assistant City Manager John Stefanski here. Welcome.
Yes, good uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, I am pinch hitting for Bernadette Sullivan, who uh is unable to be with us tonight because she uh unfortunately is uh ill. So I'm gonna just share my screen here real quick and then we'll get going. Okay, so by way of background, uh secondhand smoke is harmful. Um, it's twenty twenty-four. I think we're all aware of the uh impacts that it can have um on smokers and non-smokers alike. Uh, and secondhand smoke is something that is very difficult to mitigate. Um, I know the Surgeon General confirms that ventilation or separating smokers doesn't eliminate secondhand smoke dangers. And as I was writing these talking points, I started thinking back to going to a restaurant where they had the smoking and the non-smoking section and how successful that was at separating it. Uh, but with this in mind, in twenty uh twelve, the city council adopted the Clean Indoor and Outdoor Air and Health Protection Ordinance, which amongst other things banned smoking in all units of duplexes and multifamily residences. Uh, and that included also any private outdoor spaces like balconies, porches, decks, or patios. Uh, however, violations of uh the smoking regulations are challenged to enforce because smoking is by its own nature a brief and spontaneous activity. Uh, and so even if the city were to send a code enforcement officer to a location where a violation was taking place, um, a smoker can extinguish a cigarette and move to another location before an officer would be able to get on scene, uh witness the violation, and issue a citation. Uh, and so uh just as additional context, from a code enforcement standpoint, the city also um addresses code enforcement complaints according to the magnitude of the alleged violation on the broader community itself. Uh, and so those situations that appear uh to pose a serious risk to health and safety are given a top priority whereby um circumstances where there are violations of the smoking ordinance might not rise to the same level of priority. Um, and so tonight, uh with that in mind, um, staff is recommending that the city council amend the smoking ordinance to provide a private right of action for community members in extreme cases where other enforcement measures uh are ineffective. And so under the proposed amendment, the private enforcer must provide evidence of a violation. Uh, and that could take uh, that could be uh either, you know, documented resident complaints, uh inspection reports, and/or enforcement actions by a local public health or code enforcement officers. And so by giving the community the ability to act, uh the amendment would help to deter smoking violations more effectively and enhance the overall protection of our public health and safety here in the city. And so with that, that concludes the uh staff presentation on this item, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for pinch hitting. We appreciate you. Um, I'll see if there are questions. Yep, by Mayor Hill.
Yes, and acknowledging that Bernadette is not here, I hope you can help me answer my question, uh which is, have other municipalities adopted similar ordinances?
Yes, uh, and most notably, the City of Nevada did this a few years back. And so what we're presenting to the council this evening is a, you know, copy and paste, for lack of better words, um the same ordinance that they have there.
And can you comment on how effective it's been or how it's been received in that community? Obviously, if it's private right of action, maybe the City of Nevada doesn't know every outcome. But I'd like to even, did they provide any qualitative understanding of how it's been working?
So I don't have an answer for you on that right now, but we can reach out to the city and follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, Councilmember Yurans Gulati.
Yeah, thank you for stepping up uh to do this. Um, so this is for duplexes and um multi-unit apartment buildings. Um, so I wonder if there is a case for like cities where you can actually um talk about like individual houses? That sometimes the houses are very close to, you know, each other and, you know, smoke goes everywhere. So is there anything that we can do around those situations? And and again, you might not have the answer right now, but maybe it's more than a question, could be a comment.
I believe our smoking ordinance does cover houses as well.
Oh.
And so um we would be able to residents, individuals who reside in a single-family home then conceivably could file a private right of action against
Okay.
a neighbor if they were um violating the smoking ordinance.
Oh, great. I I thought it was just duplex and multi-unit. So it's also individual houses. Okay, great. I I know somebody who can use that. Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions, I will open this up to the public. The public would like to comment on this agenda item. Please come down and we invite you to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in, although you're not required to.
Uh, good evening. My name is Al Viteri. I live in Gersel Park. I'm very interested in this ordinance change because I'm presently affected by it. Um, my two suggestions I'd like to make, uh, one is it reads as if it only applied to cigarettes and there's other sources of smoke that are harmful to individuals. Um, the county lists vaping, crack cocaine, I mean, they go into much more detail. And I would suggest enhancing your language to include those as well, so people don't come away with the notion that it's just cigarettes, when uh those other um sources of smoke are also dangerous. Also, a public action is like the nuclear eruption, where if you don't do this, you're going to get evicted from your apartment. And some people are um, that would harm them greatly, especially if they were under public assistance that would be marked as uh non-compliant and suffer a much greater harm than the one intended. Uh, and so to that, I suggest uh maybe some sort of mediation where they can be informed of the magnitude of the problem and given some senses how serious it is. And this is not uh something they can just slip by and say, well, I can get away with it because code enforcement only works between nine and five or, sorry, I don't know what their actual hours are. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Welcome.
I, Shinji Sakai Agia, live over by McGuinness Golf Course. Um, to kind of piggyback on Al, um, I don't know the numbers, but maybe we've all kind of heard about it, where smokers tend to be uh people who maybe don't have the highest salaries and so forth. I just, my concern with this is that it could cause poverty. Um, whether it's a financial violation or just the stress of, you know, being watched or, you know, having to maybe attend some sort of meeting or something where it takes time. Um, I think doing things that reduce poverty is really important, especially in these hard economic times. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Not seeing anyone else, I will close the public comment and ask for clarification about applying it to broader than just cigarettes was one. And then comment about mediation, but maybe part of that answer is what is the sequence? This is one of many tools in the toolbox uh that we have. We're adding a new tool basically, so maybe you can speak to that a little bit more.
Um, I'll have John respond to that. I just wanted to let you know, I've asked the city attorney to look into the possibility of adding that additional language. Um, since tonight we're just introducing the ordinance. So if we could give him a moment to do that and and talk about kind of process steps. And I think, John, it would be helpful to contextualize some of the enforcement um activities the city has um engaged in in response to complaints and how challenging it is to effectively, like what is that challenge uh in operationally?
Yeah, thank you for that, Christine. So um, you know, one circumstance that I know um you know, I I was, I was a part of when I kind of came to the city almost a year. you know, I, I was, I was a part of when I kind of came to the city almost a year ago. There was an individual who his neighbor was smoking, um, and his wife, um, had, um, a number of health issues. And so he was really concerned about the effects of secondhand smoke that was secreted from, uh, what he was telling us was kind of coming in from, you know, the patio and was kind of coming in when they had their windows open in the summertime. And, you know, he had tried to work with his HOA, uh, and work with the neighbor to try and remedy the issue. But, uh, the neighbor did not want to, um, you know, adjust their behavior to, in recognition of his concerns. And so he raised the issue up to the city. Um, we had code enforcement go out, um, I believe three or four times to, uh, try and find the neighbor in the act of smoking. Uh, and that's, you know, uh, just, it's a very difficult thing to do because as I said, you know, smoking is a, a limited time activity. And we were never able to fully identify that person, um, smoking in a way that we would be able to issue a citation for violating the, the smoking ordinance. And so, um, in addition to that, um, we did connect with Smoke Free Marin, who provided them, with some outreach materials and some best practices and just some, uh, tips and guides on how to address the situation to the resident and also his HOA as they were trying to navigate the neighbor to neighbor dispute. But ultimately, uh, that it's one of those extreme cases where, um, all of the available tools that we had in our toolbox and, uh, the tools that our partners had, we weren't able to, uh, remedy the, the, the situation in a productive manner.
If I remember correctly, Smoke Free Marin actually suggested this could be another tool that we could put in the toolbox.
That's correct.
City Attorney.
Right. And forgive me if I didn't capture the concern accurately, but I think what I heard while I was doing something else at the same time and, uh, also listening was, um, a concern whether the, uh, proposed amendment to be introduced tonight encompassed other types of smoking along with cigarette smoking. So, uh, this section is intended to amend only the enforcement, uh, section of the chapter 9.04 Clean Indoor and Outdoor, uh, Air and Health Protection. And that's the section 9.04.120 that, uh, is identified and is the amendment which doesn't, specify what kind of smoke is being referenced. It's not limited in any way. The ordinance that's in effect that, um, isn't being amended in the definition section 9.04.030 defines smoke as the gases and particles released into the air by combustion when the apparent or usual purpose of the combustion is human inhalation of the resulting combustion products, including but not limited to tobacco smoke. And then the following, uh, definition says, smoking means inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying any lighted, heated, or ignited cigar, cigarette, sigarillo, pipe, hookah, or electronic smoking device intended for human inhalation. So as I read those definitions, they encompass any possible way of, uh, combustion, if you will, uh, for, uh, purposes of smoking. And I don't see a need to, um, make the change, but I was glad to be alerted to the issue because I hadn't looked at that. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So, uh, are there any additional questions? Then I would, uh, welcome a motion on this item, maybe the, a comment ahead of time.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, are we going to do the comments soon?
Hey, go ahead. Do you want to make a comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, you know, uh, about this because, um, I guess it's very personal. My father passed away when he was 38 years old from a heart attack. He was a smoker. And so I understand it's not like for high class or, you know, a lot of people that they smoke, they are like in poverty. I, I really believe it's very damaging and I think there are places that you can go and smoke if you still want to do it. So I very much endorse this, you know, and I really look forward to continue the conversations about how I can help this neighbor that has been suffering for years, secondhand smoking. So thank you.
Thank you.
And yeah.
Vice Mayor Hill, please come next.
Yeah. Thank you, staff, for making certain that we are analyzing this scenario. This does, and thank you for the example, Assistant City Manager, because that is an example of an extreme where the remedies that we have in place are not effective. And operationally, we also want to support, we want to support our community absolutely, but also staff's ability to enforce our ordinances. So I see this as an additional remedy that people can seek, but ultimately we want for the health and safety of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to make the motion, Councilmember Yurans Galati?
I will gladly make a motion, um, to, sorry, wait for the reading. Here it is. Um, wait for the reading of the ordinance and refer it to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Uh, the city clerk, Madam State Clerk, could read the title of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance of the city of San Rafael amending chapter nine, section 9.04.120 of the San Rafael municipal code to allow for a civil right of action for violations of the city's smoking ordinance.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is our Affordable Housing Trust Fund application processes. I see Alexis Taptanian has joined us. Welcome. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening, uh, city council members. I'm Alexis Taptanian, Housing Manager. Tonight I'm presenting a proposal to modify the application processes for the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Staff recommends implementing a rolling application process and aligning future notices of funding availability with the County of Marin's process. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund was created to increase the stock of permanently affordable housing units in San Rafael. The city periodically issues notices of funding availability for the production and preservation of affordable housing with timing based largely on sufficient fund balance. In recent years, the city has issued a notice of funding availability, or NOFA, approximately every 1.5 years. The application process, project eligibility, and evaluation criteria are established in Resolution 147760, which is our guidelines for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Per the guidelines, the city council provides oversight to the fund and reviews all loans and grants for approval. Through the NOFA process, the city has successfully funded a variety of new construction, rehabilitation, and adaptive reuse projects across the city. Due to timing, the existing NOFA process is less effective for acquisition projects. Opportunities arrive, arise in the competitive real estate market and prospective bidders often cannot wait until the city's next NOFA cycle to apply for funding. During the past several years, the city staff have been contacted by housing developers multiple times about supporting acquisitions that preserve housing as affordable and prevent tenant displacement. However, a mechanism did not exist to accept funding applications off cycle. Section four of the trust fund guidelines authorizes a rolling application process during periods without an issued NOFA. And staff is now recommending that a process be operationalized and communicated to stakeholders to enable further responsiveness to opportunities that arise and to ensure that projects can fully leverage other funding sources. Uh, in late July, the city council housing and homelessness subcommittee received the proposal for a rolling application process and provided feedback. And they recommended it for consideration by the full city council. Um, funding provided through a rolling application process could help close financing gaps and push projects over the finish line. And importantly, it would also enable affordable housing developers to leverage city dollars to compete more effectively for other funding sources. The County of Marin maintains a local housing trust fund and accepts applications on a rolling basis, as well as through their annual NOFA. The County Board of Supervisors awards funding to housing projects in jurisdictions across Marin County, including in San Rafael. And for projects outside of unincorporated Marin to be eligible for funds, the city or town must contribute financially to the project. To best leverage county and other funding for acquisitions in San Rafael, staff recommends establishing a rolling application process for acquisitions specifically with up to $250,000 in funding available per year for ad hoc real estate opportunities that cannot go through the standard NOFA process due to timing constraints. Applicants with eligible projects seeking funding for an eligible activity could apply on a rolling basis and staff would make a recommendation to the city council at a publicly noticed meeting. Staff would evaluate applications using the criteria outlined in the trust fund guidelines, including community benefit, the capacity of the development team and the management team, readiness to proceed, financing and in-kind contributions, and a reasonable per unit subsidy. The rolling application process would be reserved for acquisitions with new construction and rehabilitation projects continuing to apply during the regular NOFA cycle. The amount available through the rolling application process would be capped at $250,000 per year and would be dependent on sufficient funds being available. And per the trust fund guidelines, all units supported by program funds are income and rent restricted for not less than 55 years. And additionally, staff proposes to align future NOFA's with the County of Marin NOFA process. The county administers its housing trust fund, CDBG, and home funds. And syncing the timing of the city's process with the county's process allows us to, um, better coordinate our funds. The county's process occurs annually, typically launching an application in January. Staff also would like to explore the possibility of a joint application to reduce the administrative burden on, um, affordable housing applicants. Importantly, city staff would continue to evaluate all applications for city funding and all of those recommendations would come to the city council for consideration, per the trust fund guidelines. So staff recommends that the city council approve the implementation of the rolling application process for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as authorized in the guidelines for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And if approved, the rolling application process and future NOFA's will be announced on the city's website and notice will be provided to local and regional, um, affordable housing owners and developers so that they are aware of the change in the city's application processes. Um, with that, I'll hand it back to Mayor Kate and we are available for questions.
Thank you so much. Questions? Councilmember Yurans Galati?
Um, so is the, the $250,000 rolling, let's just say that one year, uh, we are actually growing our fund and it's a very productive year. Could we do like exceptions to that rule? Or, or is it rolling without, you know, council approval?
Um, do you mean to, to do more than 250,000? Yes. Um, I think that, um, the staff could certainly come, design the process so that we could come back to council and ask for that permission to do additional funding if that's something that the council would be interested in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Hill.
Yeah, I was of similar mind as my colleague, um, and perhaps maybe it's getting into the operations, but maybe at, at a time, if the council, I'm going through a hypothetical, we contemplate, uh, issuing a $250,000 funding, uh, for the role, uh, that perhaps in that meeting, we could contemplate, depending on where we were, that we could replenish, um, the role, uh, in that, at that time. Obviously, if we don't have sufficient funds, we would not, maybe that would be an efficient way to, to contemplate that. My concern is that with 250, if we have three really high priority urgent projects, then the first one that gets through, it's first come, first served. And I think that there could be situations where two things are true. A, there is a need and B, we have sufficient funds to support. Uh, and then I'm, um, so there was no question, but maybe a formative question, is that something we could contemplate?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, my second question is, um, with the role, does that, does that start retro to this fiscal year or starting from tonight?
So it, uh, it would start, um, if, if approved tonight and go through, you know, the 250 would go through June 30 unless your council just would like to prorate it in some way.
That's okay. That makes sense that we would do it for this fiscal. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. This is great. So support the idea of alignment with the county. I participated in the, the grant process with the county. And so it's going to be really good to know that the two can meet together to meet some of the needs. The 250,000 for acquisition, how did we come up with the 250,000? Because we haven't had those type of requests prior for really for acquisition support.
Thanks for that question. So, um, that number comes in part from, um, knowing that the city council also has a priority to fund new construction projects and that those would be coming during a standard NOFA cycle. And so, um, it's in part to ensure that, um, there's some funding left for that NOFA process. Um, however, if your council would like to look at, doing a percentage of what's currently in the fund, for example, like there, there's different ways to do it, but, um, that was also based in part on our, um, conversation at the subcommittee.
And in terms of, do we have any potential projects right now in the wings where this might be helpful? Cause I'm not, I mean, knowing the cost of properties right now, 250 seems like, and I think we talked about this in the subcommittee, is such a small amount in terms of some of these bigger projects.
It is a very modest amount and, um, the total trust fund has, uh, you know, about a million dollars in it right now. And knowing that another NOFA is, is coming up likely in January, um, this was sort of the, the proposed level. Also keeping in mind that, um, the hope is, you know, even a modest amount of funding for an acquisition could then be leveraged into additional dollars.
Right, exactly. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So you answered my question, which is how much money is in the fund right now? Approximately a million. And I think we've had a high of a couple million a few years ago, but it's never, doesn't really equate what happens at the county level in terms of dollars. So it's been pretty small. So, and just to clarify, this 250,000, it subtracts from that one million to your point. So when it comes in January, if it goes higher, then there's less for the acquisition. Okay. I just want, because it's not an addition, it's one pot of money. And what we're saying, what we're being asked to consider tonight is that we do a carve out, as it were, uh, as it. And I do think it's interesting to think of a percentage versus an amount. And maybe it's 250 unless the trust gets over a certain amount and then it can go to a percentage. Um, I mean, I don't want to make it more complicated and I, I think the other priorities you have right now of aligning with the county makes more sense. But if we do ever get to that moment that we have more funds, that might be something we'd want to consider. I mean, possibly, yes, possibly. I don't know what the county does. I mean, I don't know if the county does percentage or dollars.
So, so, um, the county, I don't believe has a cap on their rolling
Oh.
application process.
Okay. Well, must be nice.
Mayor Kate, I'll just add, I do think it's worth revisiting and with the hope of that fund growing. And maybe there's a, a tipping point where we say, you know, to your point, if it gets to three million, then we'll reconsider the amount to, but still trying to strike that right balance to make sure that the NOFA has an adequate, you know, fund balance to make it a meaningful process.
Right. And to that point, just to clarify, the big fund does roll if it doesn't get used, but the 250 is not going to roll. It's always going to be at that amount. Right? So to, to your point, it can actually get bigger. Okay. Okay. Yeah. You have another question? Go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah. So I'm just thinking, you know, that's a really good, great point that maybe, you know, is like, I like the idea of having whatever it is and then like a percentage, although I'm, I'm fine the way it is. But I was just thinking about, you know, our equity component and if there is like an, a nonprofit agency that is coming and, you know, is going to do a purchase, is that, you know, have like any difference compared to a different developer that is, you know? You know what I'm saying?
I think, I think so. So, so maybe in different words, is it that like a, a smaller, maybe community-based organization that's trying to get into this space versus a really well-capitalized, larger developer? I think definitely that's part of the evaluation process when we look at applications.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. I will now open the public comment on this item. If you would like to share your thoughts or have any questions, now is the time.
Alviteri Gersel Park. Is there any way to quantify the number of units of individuals that are being placed through the investment of these 250,000 or whatever that money, that amount is each year, uh, in, in the past?
Thank you for your question. Any other questions or comments on this item? Not seen any. I'll close a public comment. And so I think the question even broaden it around the data, um, when we do allocate dollars, either specifically on this or the broader allocations.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. One data point that we've brought before to the council is, you know, what are the, you know, what are the levels that we're subsidizing projects at? And then also, you know, per unit, and then how many units are we preserving? How many are new? And that's something that when we come back to ask for authorization to go forward with a NOFA in January, we would bring the, you know, we could bring those types of data, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Thank you. And I think that's helpful. I'll turn to my colleagues for additional comments before I request a motion. Councilmember Kurtz, any additional comments?
Nope. I just think having this, having the NOFA available is super helpful and it's very meaningful for these projects to go forward. It will be very interesting to follow the first ones that come in for acquisition. Because I think we might see, maybe not, but maybe we'll see that there's opportunity to refine what we're doing based on what these projects are. Because I'm not sure what would be coming through just yet from an acquisition. We know that there's lots of, lots of projects that fit under the current NOFA requirements. So this will be really good, but I think it's so important to have this. And I, again, really appreciate the alignment with what's happening at the county and the rationale of using the same type of form and process. Because these projects, they need a lot of funding and so it makes sense to have it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, comments?
Mayor Kate, thank you Alexis for this report. I am so supportive of this movement. It is so regrettable that there's, irrespective of how wonderful an opportunity is, that we have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that sometimes it feels as though we have to say, sorry, you have to wait until. And this at least allows for another opportunity, another way to, even if it's a modest amount, it's, those dollars are very valuable to create what I, in my mind, see as a snowball effect. When we look at every one of the major projects, whether it's Jonathan's Place or 3301 Kerner, our contribution makes a huge difference, I think, when we look at all the contributors. Vivalon also among those. So I'm very much supportive of this. I am, I stand interested if this would preclude our opportunity to replenish at the time if we do move forward inside of a year with an award. So hopefully this will allow for that. If not, is, let me know if the council could entertain a small amendment to allow for a replenishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurans Galati, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I echo the sentiment from my colleagues. I, you know, it's so important to attract developers that they are going to build more housing here, especially like a very low-income housing. And anything that we can give you to have more flexibility and, you know, go fast, you know, to try to negotiate those deals, I think is great. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add that we started the Affordable Housing Trust Fund not that long ago. And we really appreciate the fact that staff has come back with an iteration. And it doesn't seem too onerous, because sometimes when you start to have these processes, it gets really bureaucratic. So very appreciative, as has been mentioned, that aligning with the county. And it seems like the lift will both have the, hopefully the result that we want, but it won't be too much, too much work on staff's end to make it happen. And then finally, I just have, we all have to underscore that these dollars are so precious. These are the most flexible dollars we have. And you mentioned it in your staff report, but it bears repeating that these are really for matching. They're not, they're for, you put them up and then it attracts more dollars. And we love being able to be in that position. And I think this council is very eager. We don't want an account that gets really big. We want to be able to extend this to move the projects forward. So I hear approval of this, but we need to make it official. So I would love to have a motion. Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
Make a motion, approve the implementation of the rolling application process for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as authorized in the guidelines for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you so much, Alexis. The next item on our agenda this evening is personnel changes. And it has a very long description that I'm not going to read, because I will turn it over to staff to walk us through it. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. I'm Nick, this HR Operations Manager. The HR team is bringing to you tonight some proposed personnel changes that will allow the city to operate more efficiently and effectively. In our SEIU bargaining unit, as discussed during bargaining with the group, we are bringing to you the salary schedule to codify the classification title change from childcare director to childcare supervisor. This came out of a classification study with a consultant, and that was the title and the responsibilities that were recommended to more align with what the work, or the work that the position is doing. In our unrepresented executive management group, we also worked with a consultant to do a classification study for the city attorney positions, the assistant city attorney specifically. A recommendation was made to establish a new classification of chief assistant city attorney and set a salary range that was in line with the market for that position. It allows for a greater breadth of experience in our city attorney team and career growth within that department as well. This would also require adjusting the assistant city attorney salary range to fall in line with that of the chief assistant city attorney. In our unrepresented mid-management group, we are proposing the conversion of a fixed-term senior human resources analyst position to a regular full-time position and setting a salary range for that. Additionally, clarifying some language around seniority for the unrepresented mid-managers to bring the benefits for that group in line with that of the represented mid-managers. And then lastly, in the represented mid-management unit, we are proposing the conversion of a fixed-term position to a regular full-time to do work as a wildfire mitigation program manager. And also to set the salary range for that position. And then the last change in that is specifically with our community services division and Assistant City Manager John Stefanski is going to speak on that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nick. I wanted to just take a moment to provide, I think, some additional context to this personnel action that we're taking tonight with the retitling of the community, the assistant community development director position to a community services division director. And so by way of background, the city is committed to creating a more inclusive and equitable city where residents have the opportunity to thrive. And with this in mind, the city is going to be establishing a new community services division of the city manager's office. And the division will be, the division's mission will be to develop and implement innovative strategies and programs to ensure vital resources, ensure access to vital resources, I'm sorry, fostering community resilience and promoting overall well-being with a focus on equity. They will be the ones interfacing with the county. As we all know, the county is the agency here who provides and coordinates a lot of the delivery of social services in our community. But they'll also be working with local agencies, CBOs, and other stakeholders to make sure that we're delivering services that are compassionate, effective, and responsive to community needs. In the near term, this is going to be our team working on homelessness. There is such a large volume of work daily in terms of responding to encampments, homelessness-related issues, and resident complaints. And so our thinking with the creation of this division is it's to bring in a team that can think strategically on what the city's approach can be moving forward. So, you know, for much of this last year, we have been focused on responding to litigation and having all of our attention and resources be poured in that direction. And by establishing this new division, this will be our dedicated crew to formulate a strategic plan and policies for the city council to consider in due time. And so outside of this, they'll be focusing on securing and managing funding and serving as a key liaison with the city and other stakeholders. And for example, they'll be coordinating like the Community Homeless Fund with the MCCMC, overseeing the implementation of the ERF grant and the second phase of the interim shelter project that we're seeking to do. And over time, they'll develop programming that reaches more of our community members in need. And so just to summarize, this item before the city council is just to retitle the assistant community development director position to a community services division director. So a lot of big words there in a row. And the division director would oversee this newly created division and would be supported by our housing and homelessness analyst.
Thank you. Thank you. I will turn to my colleagues for questions on this. Vice Mayor, any questions on this? I don't have any questions either. Let's see if the public would like to comment or have their questions of their own. I'll open the public comment. Welcome.
Alva Terry Gersell Park. Over the past few months, there's been quite a number of additions to staff and expansion of services, all very good things. But I'm wondering if this is an indication that maybe another city council member is needed to assist with the many new responsibilities that are being thrust upon them.
Thank you for your question. Any other input? Not seen any, I'll close the public comment.
Mayor Kate, may I just make a clarifying comment that I think is important for context? None of these recommendations are additional staff. They're all reclassifications or re-titling and repurposing of existing staff and full-time equivalents. I just want to clarify that.
Yep. Well, that was the question. Thank you for clarifying. I think it was said in the staff report, but it always bears repeating. Especially what staff is trying to do is to realign our positions with how local government shows up today. So that's really what we're hearing is an evolution of it, both in terms of titles and salary levels. So thank you for looking into that. Additional comments or a motion? I would welcome a motion on this item.
Make a motion, adopt a resolution approving changes to the Samerfeld Mid-Management Employee Association, SRMMEA, Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 1021, and underrepresented mid-management executive salary schedules.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries four zero. And then there's the second motion that's required?
Adopt a resolution approving minor changes to the underrepresented mid-manager salary resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries four zero. That concludes our agenda portion. We do have open time for public expression. If there's anything that the public would like to share with the council that is not on the agenda, now is the time. Not seen any, I will close the public expression. I do want to say we'll go into closed session upstairs on real property negotiations after we have adjourned the meeting. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we are adjourning in honor of former mayor Al Burrow. I know Sodi Attorney Rob Epstein would like to say a few words before I say a few things myself. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I was struck by the comments of the speaker at the beginning of the meeting because I too met Al Burrow when I was in elementary school. When I was a member of the local scout troop and he was an assistant scout master, I did the same merit badge assignment of meeting with the mayor, who was then Mayor Bettini. And it's a huge loss and I was so saddened to have received the news today. And it hasn't really sunk in yet for me, I can tell you that, because he was such a big part of my life and the life of this city for so many years. He, you know, the roles that he played in this room as planning commissioner, mayor for such a long time, and then as a mentor to so many staff members, city managers, assistant city managers, and elected officials, including this one. And my first term as city attorney, and I'm on my fourth term now, but he was the mayor during my first term. And he really did mentor me and helped me so much in becoming comfortable in this role and learning how to do it and learning how to be the attorney for the mayor and the city council. And so he and his family, Pat and his kids, are very much in my thoughts right now. I called Gary Raggiante this afternoon because I knew he would be sharing my feelings in this moment. He's my predecessor as the city attorney and worked with Al for many, many years. And so I think he and I will both look forward to offering more comments at a later date. But I am glad to join the mayor and the council in closing the meeting in Al Burrow's memory and appreciate the chance to say a few words about him just now.
Thank you, Rob. That's lovely. And I also concur that having Mario say that, his comments at the beginning and Cecilia saying the, hey kid, as soon as she said that, I could just hear that in my head as well. So while we've lowered the flag to half mast and we are adjourning tonight in the honor of Al, we want to do more to honor his legacy. And so we are reaching out to the family. This is what you're referring to. So at a future meeting, we can acknowledge more deeply the contributions of Mayor Burrow. So tonight is just a little bit, because I think we all really want to share and and miss him together, as it were. So right now, I'll simply highlight his years of service. And I was struck by things that you said off the cuff for things that I actually had written down. He started as a planning commissioner in 1971 and served for 16 years. He served as a council member for four years. And then he was elected mayor and he served for 20 years. I first met Mayor Burrow myself. It's going to be a lot of the recollections I can see when we come forward again to talk about him in 1999. And so over those past 25 years, I was able to see firsthand his wisdom, his steadiness, and his kindness that he brought to his role as a public servant. And in addition to that, he was a man of action and got things done and buildings built. The Al Burrow Community Center in the Canal neighborhood is a testament to all of those wonderful qualities of his. He was a mentor to me as well and many in this room and beyond this room, and we will all miss him. We acknowledge and appreciate that Samerfeld is a better place because of his efforts. This meeting is now adjourned in honor of former mayor Al Burrow.